We can start.
Okay, hello and welcome everybody to our October General Meeting. I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We have quorum, so we will now move on to roll call. Commissioner One, District One Commissioner Mishra.
Present.
District Two Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Present.
District Three Commissioner Sanchez.
Present.
District Four Commissioner Arroyo.
Present.
District Five Commissioner Liu is absent. District Six Commissioner Bonsal.
Present.
District Seven Commissioner Vu.
Present.
District Eight Commissioner Gonzalez Munoz.
Present.
District Nine Commissioner Singh.
Present.
District Ten Present Citywide Commissioner Kucheruski.
Present.
We will now move on to item two Consent Calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Uh, Commissioner Vu motions.
Any seconds.
Commissioner Sanchez, second.
You will now vote on your screens. The vote passes by a vote of ten zero, so now we will move on to item three Public Record. Do we have any public record or correspondence today?
We don't.
Okay, we will move on to item four Open Forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on item not on today's agenda?
We do. Robin Reynolds.
Uh, just want to give you a heads up. I've been doing this almost ten years with many of your predecessors. November is the National Homeless Youth and Runaway Awareness Month. It's been rebranded this year to National Youth Hope Month, Homeless Outreach Prevention and Education. Each year we've done a green light rally and walk. We do it right out in the West Plaza here at City Hall. Um, this year, for the first time, we have a, a group of agencies joining together for the cause. Pacific Clinics, San Jose Conservation Corps and Charter School, Aki Fly, Community Solutions, the California Coalition for Youth and Bill Wilson Center. One of the offers we always like to extend, we will have youth with life experience speaking at the event. If any of you would like to represent the commission that night, it's November eighth, the rally's at five thirty. It's a thirty minute rally and then a walk down from City Hall to the Droppin Center, which is where youth have a chance to get off the street. For National Hope Youth Month, um, be happy to, uh, work with any of you if you'd like to represent the city in that role. It is a crime that San Jose leads the nation in unhoused youth per capita and homeless families in Santa Clara County is the largest, fastest growing group of homelessness. So it is a cause at our feet. It is a cause affecting many of your peers at every school throughout the valley. Uh, they are there. We hope you can, uh, support National Youth Hope Month and if we, uh, can have you up on the podium, just let me know. Appreciate your time and thank you for your work with the city.
Thank you. Do we have any other people?
No, we don't.
Okay, we will move on to item five A informational item from Beautify SJ Neighborhood Blight Reduction Status Report from PR and S staff.
Good evening, youth commissioners and members of the public. My name is Aurelia Bailey and I am the interim division manager. Um, tonight with me I have Hilda Morales and Jamie Marcel, who are both program managers of Beautify SJ. I'm going to pass it on to Hilda.
Thank you Aurelia. Good evening. My name is Hilda Morales, Program Manager for the Blight Reduction Program with Beautify SJ. For today's presentation, we will highlight the Beautify SJ expansion, review our approach, highlight program accomplishments and provide insight into the work that lies ahead. Next slide please. The city's blight reduction and beautification strategy focuses on working collaboratively with neighborhood associations, schools, businesses, and residents to improve the cleanliness of our public spaces. As you can see, Beautify SJ is split into two areas, the neighborhood blight reduction side and the encampment management side. This presentation will focus on blight reduction services only. Over the past six fiscal years, the Beautify SJ Division has grown from sixteen point five FTEs to a hundred eleven FTEs. Of these a hundred eleven staff, forty-two full-time staff support the blight reduction programs, which include litter removal, neighborhood beautification and engagement, clean gateways, the rapid illegal dumping program, and graffiti abatement, which utilizes the support of GPC and outside vendor. Next slide please. The neighborhood blight reduction program utilizes the three E's proven approach, which include education and prevention, eradication and enforcement. This best practice model is used by several cities in the region and large cities throughout the state of California and the nation. Additionally, Beautify SJ is a member of the Regional Illegal Dumping Task Force and currently sits on the enforcement committee. Throughout this presentation, you will see how BSJ utilizes each of the three E's to conduct the blight reduction work for the city of San Jose. As a part of their eradication efforts last year, the neighborhood blight reduction programs removed over twelve million pounds of trash and debris, which is a thirty-three percent increase from the previous year. The graffiti team eradicated almost three million square feet of graffiti and addressed almost two thousand incidents of graffiti on private property by engaging with property managers. On our neighborhood beautification front, the team was able to collaborate with council offices, neighborhood associations, and other partners and stakeholders to successfully host a hundred and fifty-two events where a little over fourteen hundred tons of debris were collected. Next slide please. Alright, moving on to our rapid program, this team exceeded expectations by completing over ten thousand work orders and collecting a total of nine and a half million pounds of trash and debris. Lastly, through the litter program, BSJ was able to increase engagement by thirty-six percent through collaborations and partnerships with schools, community groups, and inner jurisdictional partners. These efforts led to the activation of over seventeen thousand volunteers. These volunteers collected almost nine hundred eight thousand pounds of trash and debris. A huge thank you to all of our volunteers who diligently do their part in beautifying San Jose. And I would like to pass it over to my colleague Jamie Marcel. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Marcel and I am the program manager. I am a program manager at Beautify SJ. The Beautify SJ program is appreciative of all key partnerships and we continue to maintain strong communication with those partners to address blight concerns citywide. Beautify SJ works closely with Caltrans, Union Pacific Railroad, Valley Water in the county of Santa Clara, as well as three community-based organizations that are focused on the cleanup of our waterways. In twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the city completed the Clean California Maintenance Agreement with Caltrans removing trash and debris at twenty-nine designated on-ramps and off-ramps. Beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, Beautify SJ increased Creek Partners agreements to one hundred and twenty-five thousand to increase cleanup efforts in our waterways. Next slide please. Beautify SJ continues to promote the Behavior Change Campaign and is a call to action for our residents, neighborhoods, and businesses to engage in reducing dumping and blight. Beautify Neighbor Litter, Neighborhood Litter Team engaged seventy-four schools with over seven thousand four hundred students engaged in litter education workshops. In addition to the BSJ Proud Campaign, Beautify signed a three-year partnership with San Jose Earthquakes to promote the program through advertisements and community events. Next slide please. Beautify SJ continues to work closely with code enforcement to perform the enforcement actions against illegal dumpers by vetting and forwarding evidence that is submitted by the public. The program continues to implement the use of deterrents such as surveillance camera equipment in high-volume illegal dumping hotspots and installing over three hundred no illegal dumping signs. And I will pass it back to Aurelia Bailey.
Right, so, um, what's coming up in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five? Um, our team will continue to work on the three E's eradication, enforcement, and education. Besides all the programs that Jamie and Hilda have already given you an update, our team is currently working on two additional key programs to enhance blight reduction, beautification efforts, and community engagement. They are clean gateways and our engagement strategy. Clean Gateway is proactive strategy aimed at cleaning and maintaining heavily traffic intersections and corridors that serve as gateways to the city. We are currently focusing efforts across eleven gateway corridors, corridor location. The second area that we are working on is our neighborhood engagement strategy. Last year, we relaunched the annual neighborhood conference. This conference focused on improving quality of life, engagement, and reducing blight. The conference also provided an opportunity for city staff to gather feedback on creating a new neighborhood association engagement model. This model aims to reduce barriers to engaging with the city. We identified capacity building, two-way communication, and issue support as the three most important purposes of neighborhood associations. As a result, staff is focusing this fiscal year on the foundational model by establishing a quarterly neighborhood association forum in addition to the annual neighborhood conference. So, this past weekend, we hosted our second annual neighborhood conference, actually here at the Rotunda, or here at City Hall, I should say. Um, we had close to two hundred residents attend the conference that featured workshops on neighborhood safety, homelessness, homelessness grant opportunities, and opportunities to network with city representatives and neighborhood association leaders. The sessions were designed to help residents access city services and enhance the quality and enhance their quality of life. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge our internal and external partners. Um, we know we can't do this work alone, so we appreciate all their support. I especially want to highlight, uh, the collaboration with GPC, who Hilda had mentioned early on in our presentation. They've actually been with us for the last thirteen years, resulting in abating over twenty-nine million square feet of graffiti. Which, this ends our report and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, we'll move to this commission discussion. Are there any commissioners who have any questions about the report?
I heard you guys had a, a meeting with the whole neighborhood association or what, what was it called? The, um, what was it? You guys remember? The conference that you guys had, actually? How did that go for you guys and did you guys get any feedback for what people want for next year? Or seeing what you guys can do to further kind of implement people's thoughts and concerns?
Yeah, um, we actually, um, one of the things that our team, um, the feedback we've gotten was to do more of this. So as a result of that, we're actually going to be doing some quarterly forums with our neighborhood residents and hopefully that that will result then into, um, our, then our third annual neighborhood conference for next year. One of the things that, um, we are working on and we'll be, we'll be sending that out this week is also a survey, a post-survey to all the participants. But the one thing that was a theme across the board was how do we get more of interacting with residents and specifically with other neighborhood associations across the city?
Commissioner Munoz.
Uh, is there any specific areas you guys are currently working on as of now for, for your blight reduction? Or just to clean up, um, and also take off graffiti?
Thank you for the question. So currently the way the system functions is through a reporting mechanism. So in terms of graffiti, people can report through the three-one-one app. They can send emails. They can call. Um, and we respond to all of those items that are reported. So if you see it in your community, I highly encourage all of you to download the app and go ahead and report. In terms of the illegal dumping, it's also through the three-one-one app where if you see illegal dumping, you report it, take a picture. It goes through our system and we try to get to that within five business days.
I also wanted to just highlight that, um, Hilda's team, they've been doing a lot more of expanding the reach to schools. So if any of you, um, would like to have, um, our blight team to come out into your schools, we encourage you all to, uh, reach out to us so that we can schedule that.
Commissioner Vu.
Hi, uh, I know you guys talked about like your gateway corridor areas. So are you guys like determining these places that are like heavily littered on based off the three-one-one calls? Or do you guys have like another system for that, for determining that? And, um, uh, how are you guys working to sort of like, not just like, not being reactive but proactive to the litter that's happening and the blight reduction?
So the gateway, uh, that you mentioned, so that's a specific pilot program that looks at the on-ramps and off-ramps in mostly the downtown area. So that's the gateway program that we're talking about, beautifying those spaces, making sure that there's no illegal dumping, uh, graffiti or, or litter in those areas. In regards to your question about litter, um, what we do is we do take a look at the, the data that's coming in in terms of people who are reporting. So we actually would love to work with a youth commission, with neighborhood associations to figure out where these areas exist. Um, I know that we get a lot of the reporting, uh, through our own staff, who are part of the rapid team, who go out and visit these neighborhoods. Uh, but we are trying to connect more with the neighborhood associations in some, uh, districts that are seeing, uh, litter more often than not.
Thank you. Commissioner Kucheruski.
Okay, okay. So, um, I was wondering if in the future, are there any collaborations or partnerships you're currently looking at establishing in the near future, say the next fiscal year?
And is that in regards to a particular service or just general collaborations?
Just general collaboration with San Jose, Beautify San Jose.
Yeah, so I think, um, in, in talking about our three E's, looking at the education and how we can connect with more schools. So we have been very successful in, um, going into elementary schools. So right now we're working on four MOUs um, with, uh, Cupertino, I'm not Cupertino, with Campbell, with, um, uh, San Jose Unified, Franklin McKinley, and Alum Rock, where our staff go in, give presentations to young kids, and then they engage in an activity after the presentation. So I've been able to witness some of these and kids are super engaged. And so we believe that that's the first way of making sure that there's change in communities because the kids then go home, talk to their parents who can potentially be a part of a neighborhood association, um, and take part in cleaning their, their general community. Um, so that's definitely a partnership that we're invested in, in, in pursuing. Do you want to talk about any additional partnerships?
Yes, we're also currently exploring a partnership with VTA and, um, seeing how we can support each other, whether it be, uh, litter, graffiti, illegal dumping, or possibly encampment trash on both parcel or both properties and working together to make sure we're, uh, both working hard to remove the blight.
And then the, the third portion of our collaboration is the neighborhood engagement model. The new neighborhood engagement model is that we do want to make sure that, um, we re-engage some of our neighborhood association, um, neighborhood associations and also expand our reach, especially to neighborhoods that, um, have been hardest to reach in the last couple of years or have not been reached for that matter.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I do have another one. This one's quite broad. But I wanted to ask, how do you imagine the San Jose Youth Commission working with Beautify San Jose and any initiatives they might take? Like, how do you want us to work together?
Thank you so much for that question. Um, I think that as young people, you all get to determine where our future lies ahead in the years. And I think, um, you are very powerful and instrumental in making sure that the next generation of, of young leaders are not only invested in their community, but they're teaching the little ones as well, right? Um, through, through our work, we've been seeing that at litter pickups, it's a lot of young people that bring their parents. Sometimes parents don't have time or, or just maybe are too tired. But it's the little ones and the young people that actually generate some of that work. I know there is, um, I, in my previous work, leading Project Hope, I worked with young people. And one of your, your commissioners here is responsible for bringing about sixty to seventy people out every third Saturday of the month. And so that power comes from you all being able to invest in, in your neighbors, in your friends. Um, so I would love to see how we can connect with you all. Maybe it's through advertising. We often do collaborations with, uh, parks and beautifying parks. How can we get more young people to come out and tell us what it is? What are, what are the ideas that you all have to make sure that more kids are being involved?
Alright, thank you. That was a really good response.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Okay, hi. I just wanted to say thank you for, um, a wonderful presentation. I had one question. So I saw on the slides that one of your cleanup partners for the creeks, um, is Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful and actually used to volunteer with them for, um, the park cleanups and everything. And Coyote Creek is really big and really beautiful as well. Um, so I was just, it's kind of adding on to the question you had before. Um, what are your current strategies for engaging people to go, you know, help out in these park cleanups? And I was gonna ask as well, what can the youth commission do to help promote that?
So I think something that I can do is definite, if you all give me emails or in for contact information, whenever my team collaborates with an agency or with another department for volunteering opportunities, we can definitely let you know. Um, I think what can you do is potentially help us outreach to your schools, um, to your communities, any other organization. The more that we can blast our flyers or just information for general events, um, the better. Uh, Beautify SJ also supports, um, Trash Punks and other organizations that collaborate with churches or just other organizations that are also looking for volunteers. So we would love to see more, more young people be engaged.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
So you guys brought up how you guys survey each other's like in the, um, I think just the whole, uh, group. But you guys also brought up how you guys were gonna send out surveys for the neighborhood associations. How would be, how would the neighborhood associations be able to implement that into their works?
Um, you, you mean implement the neighborhood engagement model? Um, yeah, so I think one of the things that we're trying to push, my team trying to push this year is to start those quarterly forums. And so, um, getting more neighborhood associations and not just neighborhood associations, but residents in general to participate into these quarterly trainings. You know, the, the three trainings that we, um, that was very popular this past weekend was on how does San Jose address homelessness? And, um, we also have the grants, a unit that came out or the grants team that came out and talk about some grant opportunities for residents. Um, so that was another popular one. And the other one that was really popular was from our, um, IT that talked a lot about, um, AI and how ChatGPT can, can help them. So that was actually surprising for me that that was, those three, especially the ChatGPT and AI, um, was a very popular, uh, workshop this past weekend.
Commissioner Mishra.
Hi, uh, thank you guys so much for your presentation. I had a quick question on your engagement strategy. Uh, you talk a little bit about how PRNS is working on developing a strategy to enhance and coordinate existing programs. Uh, so could you guys tell us a bit more about this specific approach and how exactly it improves outcomes for the neighborhood association forum?
Great question. Um, one of the things that we want to make sure is that we reach others and not just, I think the, the hardest part has been, um, it's been very much neighborhood association focus and really hasn't been a resident focus. And so really engaging residents, especially residents that have not participated in forums like this or any other government forums. And so we, we really want to make sure that one, we take a look at neighborhoods that we, who, who are the neighborhoods that we haven't been able to, to tap into? And how do we engage them to come to, whether it's our meetings or the, the forums? But that's pretty much where we're, where we're going to start. And then tapping into our existing neighborhood associations. Um, a lot of our neighborhood association leaders are our trusted leaders already in neighborhoods. And so we really need to rely on them to also help get the word out. In the end, not in the end, but ideally what we would like to actually create is not just these neighborhood engagement forums, but an advisory, um, group. And not a commissioner, but an advisory group that represents the whole entire city and not just a very specific, um, demographics or age or anything like that. But it represents the whole entire city. So those are the areas that we're looking at to improve this neighborhood or areas that we're looking at for this neighborhood engagement model.
Thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Um, yeah, so firstly, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I just had a question regarding like how when we were talking about the future collaboration with the youth commission and this and Beautify SJ. Uh, I was remembering that like you guys had the, the neighborhood conference last Saturday. So is there like any possibility that in the future at one of these conferences, there would be some sort of opportunity for the youth commission to table? Or like just promote the youth commission in that sense?
Yeah, um, great feedback, by the way. Um, I think one of the things that we really missed, um, this opportunity this time around is really a youth voice. And so, um, I will definitely take that back to my team to ensure that we include the youth voice um, to also be part of the process for, for next, um, for our next conference. And then even not just for, not just our next conference, but our quarterly forums.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Vu.
Hi, um, so I'm looking at your like list of collaborators and I think it's a really nice list. And, um, I know you guys are trying to do more outreach to like schools. So I was wanting to suggest like possibly reaching out to like school interact clubs, school key clubs, school like, or, and then like the upper key clubs like Kiwanis because I know they have access to like a plethora of student volunteers. And, um, these students are already engaged in like community service and whatnot. So I'm sure they'd love to take part in the Beautify SJ, um, park cleanups and neighborhood cleanups.
Thank you. Great input.
Commissioner Lu.
Thank you for your presentation. Um, as, as I'm thinking through this and as I'm thinking through Beautify SJ, it employs residents, neighborhood associations, people to clean up graffiti, et cetera, in certain communities that need it most, right? And I'm thinking that it's fairly short term. It's, let's clean this up. We're gonna go clean up another community. In the meantime, it sits there. And sometimes what I found is that it comes back, right? So has, what methods has Beautify SJ looked to, to look to addressing this as a bigger, more long-term solution?
So one of the deterrents is that we currently have established our cameras. Um, so we do have several cameras around, around the city that, um, record when illegal dumping has been happening. Right now we're working with our partners in code enforcement to figure out how to go about continuing that work. But we do understand that we have gotten really good at eradication, but we need to make sure that we bolster our enforcement. Because otherwise, if, if people illegally dump and there's nothing that happens after that, then this is gonna be a continued.
bolster our enforcement, because otherwise, if if people illegally dump and there's nothing that happens after that, then this is gonna be a continuous um issue.
Right. Um, so so to follow up on that, implementing cameras within sites to prevent, for example, illegal dumping. Is there data or has those cameras been employed long enough for us to receive data on if they're working to deter folks from illegally dumping?
Yes, there is. Um, so basically, we look at, we consider them hotspots of where this illegal dumping is happening. And so every six months, we reevaluate our data. How many service requests are we getting from that particular area? And if if we're not getting any, then we potentially move the camera to a different location. So what we have noticed is that when the cameras are there long enough, the incidence of reporting decreases.
Thank you for that. And and besides the issues that we we mentioned right now between the both of them, is there a challenge that Beautify SJ or neighborhood associations are going through right now that you all might need support on?
I I think the the support that we need is one for the education that we are providing to the community to continue to reach everybody, right? I think sometimes it may be a lack of um of knowing the resources that that are out there, like the free junk removal pickup or um or maybe people are afraid to contact the city to figure out how to dispose of their items. It is fairly expensive. And so uh, one of the things that we noticed is that in in locations with where multifamily dwellings, that that's the majority of the housing is um oftentimes people don't don't utilize the junk pickup because they don't have anywhere to store the items while the garbage company makes their rounds to pick up the the illegal dumping.
Thank you, thank you. Um, and then one last question. So this is just a point of clarification. So the youth that you engage within communities, there there, when there's a zone that you guys are working on, are those young people, are those people residents of that local community?
Oftentimes they are, uh, but sometimes um young people just go to different events. Um, and then I just wanna clarify, so the the volunteer aspect is usually through the litter pickup program. It is not through the junk removal program. We also have a beautification days where essentially we bring out dumpsters into into different communities. It is a very popular um occurrence. Um, and we often see young people volunteer in those events as well. And for the most part, we see that um young people stay within their communities.
Alright, thank you. And is there a specific spot within the city of San Jose where Beautify SJ or neighborhood associations haven't been able to connect with residents and put this program into their communities?
Um, I I wouldn't say there's a particular area. Um, I think that in most places in the city, we've been successful at either connecting with the school, connecting with the neighborhood association, or just a group of residents that engage. Um, but unfortunately, i- it's not something that once we fix once, it'll never happen again. Just because different residents move into the neighborhood or the needs just change um often.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
You guys talk about um the cameras. How can a community kind of come together and like come up with some hotspots, how you guys call them, and just report them so that we can um just keep cameras right there?
So I would say the best way is to utilize a three-one-one app and make sure that those reports are coming in because internally, we'll pull all that data for the entire city every six months or so and figure out what areas are getting hit the most.
Alright, thank you. And I also wanted to thank you guys for the dumpster cleanup that you guys had this weekend. Uh, it was really helpful for my for my community and just thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. I had one question on the reporting app. So you mentioned that you would like to have youth be reporting and engage in the reporting process. And I wondered, are there any materials or information that you dispersed among youths that we can become self-reporters of light in other instances of litter in the city? So that we can also go out and tell youth how to report it so that they're well equipped to um identify it and report it to the city and get in touch with them?
Yeah, so we can definitely get you flyers or door hangers. Uh, we can also come and do presentations uh either at schools or different uh places where there's a lot of young people that convene. So i- if you all reach out to our office, we can definitely become creative and figure out a way to get to spread the word.
Got it. Thank you so much. We will do that. Commissioner Lu.
Is there data on how many people utilize the three-one-one platform, reporting platform?
Yes, I'm pretty sure there is data. I don't have that data with me. Um, but we can definitely get that information back to you.
Thank you. Um, and and then to follow up on that really quickly, um, I I know that uh in in the in the one incident where I had to call animal service, um, because I'm a minor, they wouldn't take information due to privacy. I'm wondering what how the platform protects privacy, especially for minors that use this platform to report incidents?
You know what? That's the first time I hear that question. I'm not entirely sure. Um, but I can definitely go back and ask and get back to you all.
Perfect. Thank you. Follow up would be appreciated.
Commissioner Roya.
Hi, um, thank you for your presentation. I had a question. You guys did mention that yeah, there's like an opportunity to have like school presentations. Um, and you guys would eventually like to branch out to more youth. Um, is there a way we can reach you or some some way to find you guys to try to get those presentations?
Yes, we can. Um, I can email you our information. Yeah, so we'll we'll go ahead and um take care of emailing all of our information and you can all reach out to us.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for your presentation. It was really informative and I think that we have a lot of action items to go off of based on the report. We will move on to informational item five B, education strategy annual report from Vidya Columbia.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Vidya Kilambi with the library and I'm very excited to present um the highlights of our work as part of the education strategy annual report. Um, we will take turns presenting today and I will start off the presentation with some background information and the team will present on the on the work. In May two thousand and eighteen, city council unanimously approved the Education and Digital Literacy Strategy, or EDL, to ensure that the city's investment in education and learning would be aligned with the intended outcomes and designed educational goals. The EDL structure which we currently use focuses on edu- educational attainment areas of planks and includes early education, expanded learning, college and career pathways, and digital literacy. In addition, the city's first education policy was approved by city council in February twenty twenty. Since May two thousand and eight, quality standards were developed and adopted in each of the programmatic areas to deepen the work of the EDL strategy. Once the standards were adopted, implementation began with an assessment of each program and development of related improvement plans. This is a continuous process and we use it to make changes to programs and adapt to community needs. Here is an over overview of the program quality status by plank. Most programs are ranging from ad standard to advanced. Programs that are emerging are new to the process. Here is um a list of some of our partners that are um that work with us to move forward the EDL strategy and none of this work would be possible without the support of all our partners. And program status. And here um we give you a brief description of program status and outcomes for all our various programs. We start off um with the early education, San Jose Recreation Preschool. City of San Jose is committed to providing high-quality early education for children zero to five and their caregivers. This overview highlights the successes and goals of two K, two K initiatives, the San Jose Recreation Preschool from the Department of Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Services and the library's early education program. In uh twenty-three, twenty-four school year, San Jose Recreation Preschool served three hundred and sixty unduplicated children between the ages of three to five, which is a twenty-five point eight percent increase in enrollment compared to the previous year. This surge in participation reflects the growing demand for quality early education within the community. PRNS utilized the Early Education Quality Standards Assessment Tool to measure program quality across eighteen classrooms. The results indicated a substantial improvement with a twenty-two percent increase in ratings and an overall rating of proficient. Additionally, eighty-three percent of the teachers were rated as strong, showing a thirty-six percent improvement from pre-assessments. In twenty-three to end fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the library offered more than three thousand early education programs, reaching eighty-seven thousand participants across its twenty-five branches. This marks a twenty-five percent increase in the number of programs and a twenty-four percent increase in participants over the previous year, demonstrating the growth, the growing impact of the library's early learning initiatives. The library's offerings include storytimes, kindergarten readiness programs, and enrichment activities in art and science. The library also used the Early Education Quality Standards Assessment Tool to evaluate the storytime programs and which met the proficient standard across eight key areas. The library's caregiver survey re- reveals strong support for the programs with a ninety-three percent increase of respondents expressing satisfaction or high satisfaction with program quality. And now I will pass the presentation over to Lizzie, who will present on expanded learning programs.
Good evening, commissioners. It's so wonderful to see our returning commissioners again and to be back here on the best place to be on a Monday night. And also welcome to all of our new commissioners as well. I have the pleasure of reporting and discussing with you on our expanded learning. Again, my name is Lizzie Nolan. I'm the senior librarian in expanded learning. Parks and Rec serve more than two thousand four hundred and eighty unduplicated students through Recreation of City Kids or RAC programs at twenty, twenty-six after-school sites and one after-school uh education and safety ACES program. Seventy-five percent of survey respondents reported that RAC and ACES programs are actively engaged participants in healthy recreation activities to encourage healthy eating. To increase RAC after-school, Parks and Rec have leveraged partnerships with school districts to utilize expanded learning opportunity program dollars or ELOP dollars to um and worked with community partners like uh CFCU to provide scholarships. I almost said next slide to myself. Keep it going. Oh, no, I got it. I'm good. Thank you. Um, SJ learns is a city-funded grant program that provides local education agencies or school districts with resources that leverage their budgets and selected community-based organizations to improve learning and outcomes and expanded learning access to high-quality after-school programs um for risk, after-school risk. An annual external evaluation demonstrates SJ learns programs improve academic performance and student engagement. And now I'll hand it some to my colleague.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Amanda Addy, the College and Career Pathways Coordinator, and I'm excited to share with you a little bit about four of our college and career programs at the city, two of which are managed um by the library department and my unit team. One of these is Career Online High School, which provides adults nineteen and older with the opportunity to earn an accredited high school diploma and a career certificate for free through the library. Ninety-eight percent of participants in this program identify as Black Indigenous people of color and ninety-eight percent are also parents. In interviews, prospective students talk about how a diploma will improve their job prospects and how the program will help them make a better life for their family. At our graduation ceremony in August, one of our speakers, who is a seventy-year-old grandparent, told the audience that it's never too late and shared about the joys of helping her grandchildren with their homework. In the last fiscal year, fifty-seven adults were enrolled in Career Online High School and twenty-eight graduated with their high school diploma and career certificate. As of just this week, a total of one hundred and ninety-seven adults have earned their degree through the program since it launched in twenty sixteen. One other point of celebration for this program is that our graduation rate at seventy-four percent is the highest among library systems in the state of California. Based on surveyed data collected from our partners at the California State Library, seventy-seven percent of graduates from our libraries program aspire to pursue college. And in the next year, our team's work plan includes building out strategies to support participants on these next steps along their college and career pathways journeys. This next program is the Resilience Core, which is a workforce development program for young adults ages eighteen through thirty with two pathway programs, one managed through the library department and the other through our Parks and Recreation Department. The library manages the learning pathway with our partners at the library foundation, serving as the employer of record. Participants gain experience in the expanded learning field, working with high-need students in grades K through eight. In academic year twenty-three, twenty-four, forty-two of the fifty participants completed their term of service in the program and they were placed in capacity-building roles with the Boys and Girls Club of Silicon Valley, Catholic Charities Charities of Santa Clara County, Mount Pleasant After-School Program, Parks and Rec, and the library at the city, and they worked over twenty-one thousand hours with students. Ninety-six percent of participants in this program identify as Black Indigenous people of color and the vast majority are first-generation college students, ensuring that these often underserved groups have access to career support and living wages while giving back to their community. The other pathway managed by our partners at Parks and Recreation is the Climate Change Pathway. And for this one, the San Jose Conservation Corps Charter School serves as the employer of record. Participants in this pathway gain experience working on natural resource management projects, critical, critical infrastructure and landscape management projects. In the last fiscal year, one hundred and ten of one hundred and fifty-two participants completed their term of service in the program and worked over a hundred and thirty-three thousand hours. Ninety-one percent of participants identified as Black or Indigenous people of color. Last but not least for me, I'm gonna talk about the San Jose Works Youth Jobs Initiative, which is a partnership between the city's Office of Economic Development and Work to Future and the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance. This program provides youth with employment services and critical life skill instruction. In the last fiscal year, the San Jose Works program provided subsidized and unsubsidized employment opportunities to a total of eight hundred and thirteen youth and young adults. The subsidized program is a paid internship for San Jose youth ages fourteen through eighteen who meet eligibility requirements, one of which is living in an area with an identified gang presence or an opportunity neighborhood. Last year, eighty-two percent of participants lived in or within one block of an opportunity neighborhood. All subsidized youth were placed in a priority sector and/or an in-demand occupation related to information technology, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, construction in the trades, public service, like the library, and business. This last year, seventy-five youth um were also connected directly with a mentor to support them in their long-term goals. I will now turn it over to my colleagues.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ofelia Medina and I'm the Community Programs Administrator for Adult Literacy ESO and the Branch Manager at the Hauviu Library. Um, so let me change this slide. Okay. This is the first time we're reporting on adult literacy in the ASL as part of the education strategy. The library's ESL and adult literacy programs support the goals of adult adult learners in San Jose that want to learn English and or improve their reading and writing skills. We offer general conversation clubs, ESL programs, classes for different levels, a variety of literacy programs and one-on-one tutoring services for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. For fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, staff will focus efforts on developing and offering ESL conversation clubs and programs for true beginner, level-zero adult learners to ensure that they have an opportunity to develop sufficient skills to participate in additional ESL literacy and learning opportunities in San Jose. In addition, staff will be focusing efforts to support and implement programs for the Children's Youth Services Master Plan at Hillview and Seven Trees, and continue to work on our priority area working groups to foster safe, clean, and connected communities. Thank you.
Thank you. The education strategy is part of building out a comprehensive plan that addresses needs beyond education, using these programs as entry points, facilitates residence through systems to ensure a seamless experience, further links data about educational outcomes to related goals for employment, safety, and wellness, and aligns current city efforts to county and partner programs and overall expand our collective impact. In next steps, we will continue implementation of quality standards and continuous quality improvement process, roll out a reporting dashboard using participation data, evaluation, and outcomes for city education programs, work with the Youth Commission, thank you, to identify priority strategies for improving college and career-focused outcomes, and align city programs with the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. And this concludes our presentation. We are available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No, we don't.
Okay, we will move to commission discussion. Do any commissioners have questions about the report? Commissioner Roya.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. Regarding the last slide on the ESL program, does that extend to youth, or is that just for adult ESL learners?
So the programs I'm overseeing are for adults, so it's actually for adults at this time.
And is there any programs that are aimed towards youth who are trying to learn English currently in that area?
We don't have any at this time. We don't currently have any at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. I have one question. So regarding your Expanded Learning programs, I was just wondering what programs you had for people who are interested in learning a second language, because I know languages such as Spanish, Vietnamese, they're all really, I guess, they're good to know in general for like job opportunities, career experiences, things like that. So what programs currently exist right now? Yeah, that's my question.
Thank you so much. When I think of additional second language programs, I don't know that the library offers too many for youth, as Ophelia has alluded to. I could check on that. Engage back to you. I will also say that the library has a wealth of online resources to help with language learning. The two that come to mind are Mango Languages. I'm like looking at the rest of the library staff to jump in as well. Mango Languages and, oh, there's another one. But it's similar to Duolingo where it's an app and you can learn, you know, through creative play and games as well. But I have to get back to you exactly on the question of specific programs. Thank you.
Commissioner Munoz.
For your slide for the San Jose Works, let's, how would someone apply, or how would someone want to get more information on getting a job with San Jose Works? How would, would they reach us out? Would they reach out to us, or is there any websites or anything that have been promoted to youth?
Great question. For the subsidized program, the majority of those placements and internship positions are made through referrals. So young people who are connected to programs within the Youth Empowerment Alliance are identified as, you know, high need by the program staff at Parks and Rec or through the best-funded agencies, and they refer young people into the program. The San Jose Works team also has partnerships with a few of the schools in the area, like the Opportunity Youth Academy, am I getting that right away? That also make referrals. For the unsubsidized program, where the employers pay directly the wages of the young people, you can go online as a young person to the San Jose Works website and apply to that program. And in terms of getting the word out about those opportunities, I'm going to have to get back to you on what the current strategies are through the Office of Economic Development. But it's certainly something that we, I think, through our College and Career Pathways team can consider and how we can work together. I know College and Career Pathways is part of your work plan this year as a commission, and I'm really looking forward to thinking about how we can work together to identify some high-leverage strategies to raise awareness about resources that are available, but also think about how we can encourage program improvement.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Vu.
Hello, thank you for your presentation. I wanted to touch on the Career Online High School. So I know you guys said that currently that program is like leading California in like graduation rate. But I was wondering, like, what are you guys looking to do slash implement in this upcoming year to push that seventy-four percent graduation rate higher?
It's a great question. We're excited to have some grant funding through our partners at the foundation to bring in some additional staff capacity to enhance the all stages of the program, but we are more focused on what happens after the program for this fellowship position than we are on the enrollment process. So I think one of the reasons we have the highest graduation rate in the state is the level of rigor that we have in place for making people, making sure people who have scholarships for this program really understand what the expectations are, understand what the program is all about, how it works, and know that when they're signing up and receiving that scholarship that they will be as successful as possible. Certainly, we always want to try to push that higher, and so we are refining our interview strategies as well to think about how we can identify people who are going to be successful without unnecessarily creating barriers to access to the program. So it is a delicate balance. I think we we really want to make sure that people who are receiving these scholarships make the most of them. But we also want to be open-minded about who can receive those scholarships. So a lot of our improvement efforts in this next year will be focused on what happens after someone graduates. So you have your high school diploma and your career certificate, and then what happens? How do you navigate to a community college? How do you apply for a job? And so connecting them with those sort of next-step services is where we're really focused in the next year.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Singh.
Yeah, I think it was just briefly mentioned about colleges after this program. I was just wondering in the future if there's any initiative to partner with like perhaps CSU's or UC's or colleges of that sort to provide like, not a direct funnel, but sort of guidance into how to apply into these colleges after this program.
Yes, thank you for that question. We, that is something we're definitely working on. We are lucky to have some partnerships in place with some of our community college partners who offer programs at the library on a regular basis to help people consider options for community college and other enrollment opportunities. And I was excited when I first learned about this program to know that the community colleges, even though, you know, they get paid by enrollment, they're not necessarily competitive, and we really want to, they do work very well together to try to help people navigate to the school with the program that best fits their interests. So they, you know, we have a partnership with Evergreen, and so Evergreen will do a, you know, how to get ahead with community college presentation. And it will cover not just what's offered at Evergreen, but also the other community colleges in the city.
Commissioner Lu.
Before I get into my plethora of questions, I'm looking at Parks and Recreation's Resilience Core program, and I want to verify this number. A hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and four volunteer hours. That.
That's the total number of hours that they worked, not individually, but cumulatively across the program.
Very impressive. My Youth Commission colleagues, that's over half a decade worth of work.
Yeah, worked by over a hundred people.
Right, thank you. So the education policy seems to really be the foundation for the library to be able to build these programs for our residents. My first question is, how is that education policy updated and reflective of what residents want? And can you describe, you know, the process in which a library thinks about that?
Thank you for the question. It is a continuous process, not so much as like we go back. I mean, we hear from the community on a regular basis on our various programs. And then we also review the education policy. Want to say annually, maybe biannu-, every other year maybe, and make sure that it's still reflective of the work that's being done and the reflective of what the community wants. I think the next one is coming up soon, so we'll keep you in the loop when we do that next.
And what's the library's process of, how does the library engage with residents and take that feedback?
We do a lot of surveys for us, after every, almost every, every program has its own set of surveys that we do. Every plan has its own set of surveys. And then we also have a lot of community engagement that we do. Every time we go out to outreach, we ask the community, we ask people in that out, in that area, what do they want? What do they see the library? How do they see the library? What kind of programs do they want from the library? What is, how do they see their work, you know, how their needs being reflected in the community programs? So we bring that back, then staff gather and read through all the responses. And actually, on our website, you'll see community engagement. Every quarter, a branch posts on what they heard from the community and how they are using it to build programs at the allocation.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I'm looking at all these programs and initiatives. I'm blown away by the capacity the library has. But I'm also wondering, you know, these programs benefit those who take the opportunity to be a part of them, right? And we can't necessarily force them to take these opportunities like school. But what are ways where the library is making this program so visible that young people are aware of the opportunity but may not choose to pursue them?
And that has been, that has been our, that's where we want to do better, I think, because we do a lot of outreach. People, some people who already know about the library are obviously, like you said, they take advantage of library programs, but then going into neighborhoods that, you know, are going, finding, going to neighborhoods where we try to meet people who don't necessarily know about the library, who don't know about the services that we offer. That has been what we were trying to do in the last couple of years, is go out into the community more and more so we can talk to people who don't necessarily come to our branches.
Right, thank you for that. And I want to dive a little deeper into that. So the library has constantly had this feedback loop like all other programs in the city. Within those years of accumulating the data, what specific examples has come from those survey results and the library uses to implement into programs?
One of the things that come up, that has come up in the last few, I want to say a couple of years, is public safety, you know, graffiti, things like that. And we, that's why we host programs at the library, you know, how to we work with other city departments, you know, to host programs at the library about how to be safe, how to talk to your neighbors. We, we host office coffee with, you know, come and have some coffee with your neighbors, come and get to know your neighbors kind of programs. So that's, that's some of the program ideas, program ideas such as those came directly from our community.
Thank you. You mentioned community outreach, and I want to go back to that. Is, I know that you mentioned surveys, and I know that you mentioned, survey is really that basic form of getting feedback. Is there an alternative? Because surveys, they only get data from those who choose to respond to them, right? I know that during the COVID situation, folks went to our door, and I don't believe, you know, the library has that capacity. But what are some other methods to where the library is trying to reach out to those communities that aren't giving feedback from surveys and making sure that that's implemented?
Andrew, sorry, Commissioner Lu. When I hear your questions, I'm thinking that one of the things that libraries consistently consider is non-library users, and so much of our work is figuring out what our program and our services are doing or not doing to connect with non-library users. The program that comes to mind for me is our Student Library Card. Are you familiar with our Student Library Card? We have MOUs with over twenty local education agencies that any student in their district automatically becomes a Student Library Card holder. And that is one way in which we start to bring them in young, or they're new to San Jose, or they're new to their school district, that they receive a Student Library Card. And that's one of the first indicators that there's a library in their city that has a variety of different resources and services. And really, the work of the library is then to connect the card that they receive and that number that they receive to actionable programs and services that have meaning in their lives.
Thank you. Great. Sorry.
I would just add too that I think one of the roles that we're really leaning into as a library through our education digital literacy strategy is the library's role sort of as a community connector, so that we're not just trying to connect community members with library programs, but try to identify community needs and help people in the community connect to any resources that they need and find what they need. Right? Part of the library's mission is to help people find the information they're looking for. And an example of that is, you know, we understand that it's very challenging for people who are looking for jobs in this community to find the right type of service or resources that they need to be able to move forward, because people are different and have a lot of different needs and are coming to a job-seeking place from a lot of different perspectives. And so we just launched a, like a web resource on sjpl.org where a job seeker can come and see a list of community resources for job seekers. And so we're partnering with a lot of organizations to try to mine that information and make it more accessible for people, and also recognize that, you know, there are certain services that the library provides directly, and if we don't, we can help you find the service that you need with our community partners. So it's, I would.
Last question goes to the capacity of that and the library to be able to execute these programs at the standard that they ought to be, right? And I know that as these programs are changing and as evaluations are coming in, that resources will adapt to certain programs, but in the library side, you know, how are you guys working to make sure that these programs are executed to the standard that you want them to be with the capacity that you have? And I know that, Amanda, you mentioned. They know that, Mandy, you mentioned that there are grants that are being used to hire staff, right? But I'm wondering, you know, is 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 that aspect a challenge?
I think what we what we are focusing in right now is staff training. So we do, we train our staff so that they can provide these programs at a very high quality. We might not have as many programs as we used to have before, but what the ones that we do have are of very high quality. So that's what we, our focus has been in the last few months is training and making and coordinating and making sure and working with our partners. Because we cannot provide every single program, so we work a lot with our partners so they can provide the programs that they are very efficient at, and we just connect our customers to their programs. So that's what we've been working on.
Thank you.
I'll add to that as well, that one of the pillars of the education digital literacy policy is quality standards. And each one of our issue areas has quality standards that allow us to ask those questions that you're asking. How do we train staff? What is our quality? What is our capacity? Is this program working? Is this not working? So those standards that were passed by council really allow us to ask those questions.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lou.
Hello, I just wanted to hone in on your one hundred thirty-four thousand hours served supporting climate resilience and sustainability projects. I want, I was wondering what you guys were doing to more like track the tangible impacts that these hours have had for the environment? And if you guys are like seeking any partnerships with any like organizations to determine that?
That is a very good question. I will want to connect with our partners at Parks and Rec to get you a comprehensive answer on that. Because just like the Learning Pathway Program, right, this the Workforce Development Program has sort of tiers of impact, right? We care about outcomes for program participants being connected to jobs and being connected to, you know, future opportunities in higher education or in the trades, connected to whatever their interest area is. But for the Learning Pathway Program, sort of a secondary impact point is the capacity building that happens with K-12 students. So if you are a student and there's a resilience core associate in your after-school program, how does that impact, right, your ability to learn and and do the things you need to do? For the Climate Change Pathway, what that looks like is, you know, now the Conservation Corps has a greater capacity to do these projects at a grander scale. And so I think what we tend to do is look more broadly at sort of, you know, what is the partner organization's impact and recognizing that this workforce development program has a part in that larger impact story. But your question specifically about what are the impact of those hours on the, you know, cities' interests for climate resilience is a really good one. And I'm sure this is something that our Parks friends are working on, so I'll get back to you.
Got it. I'd like to thank you for your report and I do have a couple of questions. So for a lot of these programs, you guys included great diagrams of the zip codes and sort of color coded it. And so I wanted to learn more about what the color coding means on those diagrams. And also, there's different colors. And so I was wondering what that means for these zip codes and sort of the ones that, because I'm assuming this sort of means impact by that color coding. And so I'm wondering for the areas that are seeing less impact than others, sort of what the issues are, sort of what are the challenges in those areas? And how maybe it's Youth Commission or the library is working to deal with those and sort of roll out those programs so they're more impactful in those zip codes?
I do think you're right, Commissioner, that the shading is about the concentration within those areas. So, yes. For this one, oh, excuse me, I got really loud all of a sudden. These are the participants by zip code. You can see the yellow is where there are five or fewer participants and then red is more than fifteen. So concentration, I can't even, I can't read that from here. Oh, my gosh. But there's a concentration in the middle of where a lot of those participants are coming from. And can you repeat maybe the second part of your question, like what are we doing to like make it more equitable, make access more equitable?
Sure, just how the library or how the Youth Commission can help increase the amount of participants in those areas that are seeing less? And sort of like how we can basically help with outreach for these programs in those specific areas that are seeing less participants? Like if that's a library, just sort of the amount of branches in that area and sort of like, what are those challenges as to the reasons potentially the library has come up with for those lack of participants in certain zip codes?
Yeah, maybe for for this particular question, can we go to one of the early ed program slides? Yeah, maybe maybe this, the next one. Oh. Yeah, so this, this, the size of circles on this one shows the participation levels for storytime. And so, you know, people love storytime and we want people to know where storytime is. But I think for this one in particular too, it shows those dots will align very closely with our branch locations. And so, you know, I think the the broader question of what can we do to raise awareness in sort of less dense participant resources for all our programs is something that that's why we generated these maps, right? We want to try to target our outreach to where we know the need is and make sure that the, there's like proportional and equitable both information access and opportunity access for our programs. And so we do a lot of outreach in those areas. But as commissioners and you have sort of oversight of each of your districts and connections to the schools in those areas, you know, a lot of how we make information equitable is to partner with schools. And so I think really pushing towards those partnerships might be a strategy that we can work on together.
Got it. Great. Thank you. That answers my question perfectly. The other question I had was just, I'm curious that you guys mentioned the Children's Youth Services Master Plan. And as a commission, we've been quite involved with that. And so I saw that there is some overlap between the library and the Children's Youth Services Master Plan. And so I was wondering, sort of like the development between the two, how the two have been connected with one another and sort of like some future steps for collaboration. I know Ms. Buzo is here.
Thank you. Ms. Laura will answer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Buzo with the City of San Jose Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services. Nice to see you all. It's been a little, it's been a little while. I came to your retreat in August. Yes, I want to first commend the library staff. They have been actively involved with kind of phase two of the Children's Youth Services Master Plan. As you know, City Council approved the master plan in April ninth of 2024. And so that was kind of like phase one. And so we have moved into phase two. And we have been having monthly meetings with city staff like the library, Parks Recreation Neighborhood Services, Work to Future, Housing Department, as well as county departments, community-based organizations, families and youth to start designing the work around the demonstration sites. And I know some of you are pretty familiar with that. So I'll be coming back. I'll be working with the library team to present and give you an update, a fuller update of the work that we have been doing. But yes, all of the work that the library is doing is closely integrated with the Children's Youth Services Master Plan. And I know you're going to give a little update on Blue Zones. Same thing, we're working closely with Blue Zones committees to make sure that all of that work aligns around children, youth and families.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you so much for your report. We will now move on to item five C, approve the citywide youth survey. Do we have public comment on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay, so we'll move on to commission discussion. This survey was drafted by the Career and Education Ad Hoc. It will be used to inform our budget summit and also for the ad hoc to carry out their report for the end of the year and carry out their ad hoc duties. So do we have a mo, but you can find the survey in your packet if you would like to take a look at it. But is there a motion to approve the citywide youth survey?
Commissioner Gonzalez, we need motions to approve the survey.
Any seconds?
Commissioner Lou, second.
Okay, you will now vote on your screens. Okay, the vote passes by a tally of ten zero. So we will now move on to item six, reports and informational only, starting off with Council liaison's report from Alex Dersch, virtually.
Thank you. Great. Can you hear me? Let me know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. Cool. So you all have a copy of my report. It's going to be talking about an item that City Council heard last Tuesday, the Blue Zones Assessment Readiness and Feasibility Report. I'll start with the background. Researchers in the nineties and early two thousands evaluated places around the world where people live exceptionally long and healthily. Research identified some of these communities where people are proven to live long and healthy and who shared the same lifestyle and environment. They marked these locations on a map, thus coining the term blue zone. And researchers partnered with National Geographic journalist Dan Butner to document more of these communities and evaluate what we could learn from them. Butner founded this company called Blue Zones to promote longevity by using insights from this research. Blue Zones conducts evaluations of well-being and health in communities across the US. And after evaluation, they make and implement policy recommendations for every level of society, governments, nonprofits, corporations and community-based groups to promote long and healthy living. Their recommendations primarily focus on shaping the choice environment for individuals in communities. For example, what opportunities people are presented are presented within their daily lives to eat healthier, exercise and have greater life satisfaction. Into the report, Blue Zones evaluated health and well-being in three specific zip codes in San Jose in partnership with the city, the County of Santa Clara and with the Children Youth Services Master Plan. These three zip codes are relatively disadvantaged and have lower life expectancy than much of the rest of the city and county. They comprise two of the neighborhoods that are demonstration sites for the Children Youth Services Master Plan, which you are all familiar with. The report's evaluation and recommendations also align with the master plan's seven strategic priority areas. The report's recommendations are categorized further into three sections. One focusing on policy, meaning recommended changes to regulations and programs that can be implemented by government in partnership with community-based organizations. They broke this down into topics such as the built environment, food systems, tobacco and vaping and alcohol. And each one has a more detailed breakdown that you can find in the report's appendix. The next section that they made recommendations on is places, specifically changes to systems and behaviors in specific locations such as schools, work sites, restaurants and grocery stores. Then they looked at people, by which they meant recommended outreach and partnerships to implement policy and place recommendations with certain individuals and organizations. They categorize these, for example, with community voices, civic and faith-based organizations and volunteers and ambassadors. Here, now talking about the next steps for the city and for the city council. Like I said, on October twenty-second, council accepted the report. They approved a memorandum from city staff to accept the report. And they also approved a memorandum from council members Davis, Foley, Ortiz and Dawn. Blue Zones will embark on their project of further assessing conditions in San Jose and promoting their recommended policy solutions at the government, nonprofit, corporate and community levels. City Council will meet in early 2025 to choose between three options for partnering with Blue Zones in their project implementation. One, to continue participating in the project steering committee, which provides input and direction on their project. Two, whether to help fund the project. The project is going to be funded through Blue Zones fundraising, and so it will happen regardless of city financial support. And three, whether to implement any of the policy recommendations made by Blue Zones. In the additional memorandum from Davis, Foley, Ortiz and Dawn, council also directed staff to return next year with a report that looks at three of the following, that looks at the following items within the three project area zip codes. Firstly, the status of city and county service delivery in the context of the Children and Youth Services Master Plan. Two, infrastructure conditions in those zip codes. And three, the status of ongoing city and county coordination in those zip codes regarding service delivery and other kinds of partnerships. To learn more about the Blue Zone project and the city's involvement, I've included the sources in the reference page attached at the end of this report. And thank you all. And now I'm open to any questions.
Thank you for your report. Do any commissioners have questions on their report? Commissioner Lou.
Thank you for the report. I appreciate it. Thank you for joining us via Zoom. All right. So my question is, so Blue Zones has been really under the leadership of District Six in coordinating this. And I know it's fallen under Blue Zones as well, but in the future, where will the leadership come from for this Blue Zones project?
Yeah, so the the Blue Zones project, the full list of participating organizations in the steering committee can be found on their, in their report that's attached. But it's, it wouldn't be specifically District Six, Six. It would be from the whole city partnership and especially in the participating groups in the Children Youth Services Master Plan.
Thank you. Any commissioner, other commissioner questions? I had one question about the, I don't know if you can touch on this, but the phasing implementation of the Blue Zones. I know that it's being rolled out particularly in three different zip codes right now. And I was wondering about the future of the project and maybe if it'll be carried out in other zip codes as well, looking into the future.
That's a great question. Yeah, all the information I have about it is in the report attached. The report doesn't touch on anything that could be expanded beyond those three zip codes. Though of course, the kinds of policy recommendations that the report makes are applicable across the city and across communities. And of course, the zip codes have no physical boundaries. And so the effects felt in those communities are felt all over. But it is focusing on those three zip codes specifically.
Got it. Thank you so much. Any other commission question? Okay, well, thank you for your report and we will now move on to Parks and Recreation Neighborhood Services report from Lauren Hawkins.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time this evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Lauren Hawkins, sorry, Lauren Box, Recreation Superintendent for the Department of Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services. This evening, on behalf of the department, I'll provide you with a update on what's been going on this last month. So starting off strong, the department is actively recruiting for several positions, as you can see, to support our ongoing efforts citywide to build community through fun. All these job opportunities are available on the city's job announcements board, which is overseen by the Department of HR. Several of these are closing right around the corner and some are a little bit more long-term. With department updates, most recently Olympia Williams has been selected as the deputy or, yes, deputy director of the Community Services Division. She will oversee beautify SJ staff who just presented to you earlier this evening along with the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance, to name a few. And exciting news for the department, we were nominated for the 2024 Catalyst Change Award. Specifically, our placemaking team that supports events like Viva Caia, Viva Parks, our Cali Bunga Water Park that's located at Lake Cunningham Regional Park and the Emma Prush Park and Farm All-Inclusive Playground were nominated for the placemaking awards. We're asking members of the public to help cast their votes for us, if they so choose, of course. Voting is going to close on November fourteenth at six PM. And all of these links throughout the presentation have been provided to you at a later date. Within the Recreation Division, we have exciting things happening. Our 2025 scholarship application is now available for members of the public looking to apply. And we encourage folks to apply early as the 2025 season is right around the corner. And this is going to be very important for those looking to enroll in summer camps, which will be available for registration in February of 2025. And speaking of registration, our winter 2025 season is going to be available. Uh, and speaking of registration, our winter twenty twenty-five season is gonna be available for registration, both online and in person uh beginning Saturday uh November sixteenth at ten A M. Uh, if you are looking for classes to register for, those uh classes and information for each community center are available online and in person at your local community center in the citywide or community activity guide. Um. You can also view it online via this link um that I have available, and most notably, as seen in this picture here, uh, last Tuesday, City Council uh specifically Councilmember Ortiz presented the department with a proclamation for Lights On After School. This year, uh, we celebrated the twenty-fifth anniversary of Lights On After School, which is a nationwide event that celebrates the importance of after-school programs and the role that it they play uh for children and parents and caregivers. Uh, in the Community Services Division, uh, as my colleagues just mentioned a little bit ago, uh, this past Saturday, they hosted uh their annual neighborhood conference at City Hall, uh, which was led by several members of the Beautify S J team. Um. And in the spirit of Beautify S J, they are hosting a uh litter pickup at Columbus Park in collaboration with Trash Punks, again, another organization they mentioned a little earlier on November second. Um. And then on the other side of the Community Service Division House, uh, the San Jose Youth Empowerment Alliance uh will be having a policy team meeting on November twenty-first, if you are interested in attending that as well. Um. Within the Parks Division of the department, they have quite a few activities coming up. Uh, Friday Night Lights at Lake Cunningham Action Sports Park, uh, weather permitting, every Friday from three to nine P M. They're inviting residents to come out to bring their wheels of any kind uh for a tour of the park, if you will, and an opportunity to listen to great music from local bands. Uh. Additionally, our Emma Prush Park and Farm, uh, they're hosting a several series of several classes uh to get folks out to the park and interacting with farm animals and getting a little bit closer to nature. Um. Also, this Thursday for Halloween, if you're looking at for a safe place to go trick-or-treating with friends and family, uh, the park is doing a free event from five to seven P M at the park. Uh. And lastly, Powell Stadium is hope hosting uh free homework assist assistance on Tuesdays and Thursdays from four thirty to six P M. That's gonna run from September seventeenth all the way until May twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five, so every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the school year, if you're looking for a little homework help, we encourage uh members of the public to join us. And that is the end of the report. I have time for any questions or comments.
Do any commissioners have any questions or comments?
I have a question about Paint the City, and so I was watching the mayor go out in the city and do um Paint the City in different areas, and so I was wondering just sort of the community involvement engagement and sort of what the feedback was from that initiative, which I found a lot of my friends participated in, so I found it really interesting, and I participated in one, so I was wondering sort of what the feedback was from that program.
Um. I'm not too familiar uh on the feedback quite yet, but I can definitely get that information and share that back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you so much for your report. We will now be moving on to the San Jose Library Report from Vidya Columbia.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to present the library's report. Last week, we celebrated National Friends of the Library Week. Friends of Library Groups are nonprofits that play an essential role in supporting their respective library branches by fundraising through book sales, hosting community programs, sponsoring events, advocating for the library, and more. We thank our friends for their commitment and continued support. On October eighth, City Council approved a permit for the Kaiser Permanente Hospital redevelopment project adjacent to one of our busiest branches, the Santa Teresa Branch. Um, I'll today I'll be highlighting a few of our upcoming programs. This year, Diwali, the Hindu Festival of Lights, is celebrated on October thirty-first. Attend one of many S J P L scheduled events to learn about and celebrate Diwali through song, dance, and art. We also have several Halloween programs, such as Storytime, Scavenger Hans Pumpkin craftsbook giveaways, and parades, including our annual Halloween Parade at the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Library, scheduled for Wednesday, October thirtieth, from four to five thirty P M. In November, the library will celebrate Native American Heritage Month. Attend one of our libraries' scheduled events to learn about art, history, and culture with Storytime and crafts. For more information about these celebrations and programs, please visit s j p l dot org. The library is also providing the public with valuable information and services for this upcoming presidential election. As of October seventh, the library has twenty-four drop boxes, twenty-four-hour drop boxes at twenty library locations. Ballots are picked up daily, and the outdoor drop boxes will remain at our library sites through November fifth. Voting centers will be available at five library locations from November fourth to November second to the fourth, and seven library locations will be eleven-day voting sites from October twenty-sixth to November fifth. For more information, please visit s j p l dot org slash voting. Yeah, F um on all library branches will be closed for Veterans Day on Monday, November eleventh. The library will resume normal operating hours on Tuesday, November twelve. This concludes the library report. I'm available for any questions.
Do any commissioners have questions? Um, Commissioner Vu.
Hi, um, I just wanna say thank you for your report. And uh like regarding like ballot drop boxes and voting centers, I know that like voting is a way to keep like adults like civically engaged, but I was wondering if you guys had any initiatives in place to like teach um the youth about like our political system and just teach them about civics in general.
Yeah, the city, the city is hosting a civics masterclass that is on their website that, you know, uh, anybody who's interested um can take to learn more about the voting and election process. In addition, uh, our early educated education unit just concluded a series of voting voting for your favorite toy, just to get into the process of, you know, teach children the, you know, what, what, how to vote and what what voting looks like. So we just concluded that, I wanna say, on Sunday. So that was one of the programs that were um we just hosted.
Alright, thank you.
I had one question about the developments around Santa Teresa Branch Library. That's a library in my district, and so I just wanted more information on sort of what happened there, because I know there's a Kaiser Permanente like across from it, and I just wanted more information on sort of what happened.
Oh, um, council just approved that, you know, there will be a redevelopment of that um, the hospital, you know, expansion of the hospital and redeveloping it, so they just approved it. Plans, um, you know, uh, it's in the planning station.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other commissioner questions? No? Okay, thank you so much for your report. We will now move on to the Commissioner Commission Chair Report. So I don't sorry, give me one sec to pull up my report. So the first thing I would like to highlight is ad hoc participation. Um, we do need to have some more ad hoc meetings, especially for the two ad hocks that have not met. And so I think that we should get on it and start to message one another um in those two ad hocks and start to have meetings so that we can participate in activities and carry out our work plan in the spring. I would also like to quickly highlight one-on-ones. Please schedule your one-on-ones with Emily for November. Um. The next thing is promoting the Youth Commission Survey, which we talked about earlier, which was developed by the Education and Career Ad Hoc. Um, please promote the survey to schools, your YAC members, have them promote it. You wanna get as many responses um as we can for that survey, because it really does help us with the budget summit and um with data to send to City Council for a lot of our initiatives, and so please promote that as much as you can. I'd also like to highlight um the sorry, give me one sec. No, I think that's all. Oh, the L E C meeting, that's correct. Um. The L E C meeting, the Joint L E C meeting between the Youth Commission and um the Library and Education Commission will be on Wednesday, March nineteenth at seven P M. So that's something we discussed during our first meeting, that joint meeting, which we had last year to discuss the Children Youth Services Master Plan. This year, it will be on Wednesday, March nineteenth at seven P M, if you would like to mark your calendars. That concludes the chair report, so now we will move on to Commissioners' reports per city district, starting with District One Commissioner Mishra.
Hey, everyone. Uh, so I have a couple of updates regarding my D one YAC. We had a total of three meetings so far, and at our last two meetings, we took pictures for our Instagram and website. We brainstormed general ideas to focus on for this year, and we began drafting our official work plan. We also recently concluded our officer elections and selected our vice chair, outreach, and secretary. Uh, so one of my YAC members, Uvraj, and I recently met with San Jose State University Professor Richard Coase to discuss our memorandum on transportation that he drafted last year. We were really excited to be a part of his research team for Envision S J twenty forty to collect data on Broadway conditions and investigate how the implementation of urban villages in those areas could impact transportation efficiency in those areas. Uh, in addition, the D one YAC collaborated with the NorCal chapter of Rizom to hold a youth voter summit last Saturday. There, we introduced local youth to the upcoming election, educated them on the importance of civic engagement, and had two guest speakers, including California High School Democrat Chair George Ballin and a meet-and-greet recording of California State Assembly Member Evan Low. And that's all for me. Thanks.
District Two Commissioner Pradeep Kumar.
Okay, I have a couple of updates regarding my YACs. So we had our first meeting on October nineteenth, and it was just an informational meeting for what the Youth Commission does, what YACs do, and we had some team bonding activities. Um, and our second meeting, I think, is scheduled in a couple, two weeks from now, and it'll be on Zoom. Uh, regarding outreach, our next steps would be, um, of course, to promote the survey, so um, some of those activities would include emailing libraries, emailing schools, and yeah, I think that's all I have for now.
District Three Commissioner Sanchez.
So some of my updates are just for my YAC. Um, I have had my YAC talk to each other and set a time and place to meet up. Uh, I've been able to talk to two organizations to speak with my YAC to have a better connection in the future. For example, some of them are like Garden the Table, which is a farm in San Jose. I've also talked to an organization called Trash Punks with it, which is an organization that talks or that works alongside Beautify S J. Uh, they're gonna be part of the meeting coming up uh from next month, the sixteenth. Uh, and then promoting the surveys is my next outreach point. That's it.
District Four Commissioner Roya.
Hello, happy October. Um, so I finalized my interviews for District Four YAC this month. I ended up with a team of about twenty-eight um with four committees being um poverty and homelessness, social ra- social and racial equity, uh, climate change and environment, and mental health and accessibility, which is a new addition to um last year. Um, I and have two team leads per committee, and I'm hoping to have our first meeting Sunday, and I plan to um kind of talk about my work plan for the year, um, introduce everyone, make me some icebreakers, um, and to promote the budget summit that we have coming, um, that we're promoting. And um, yeah. I'm hoping to have meetings every other Sunday. From now on. Thank you.
District Five Commissioner Lu.
Thank you. We've had, as a YAC, we have four meetings with the latest one, um, at Hillview Library. Thank you for hosting us. Um, we also partnered with our council member to host Culture Fest. It was our second annual Culture Fest, and it was very successful. We are proud to have been participants of it, and months of planning um have been for that event. Um, I I'm excited to announce um and then share with you all um that the city has found funding for me to represent the Youth Commission and represent the library at the National League of City Conferences, so I'll be traveling to um Florida. Um, Tampa, yeah, the one that just got hit by a hurricane, still going, still going, um, to present and make a session um to share to all our youth councils across the country. When we, when I come back from that uh meeting, um, at our November meeting, I will provide a report on my experience and um the conference takeaways. Thank you.
District Six Commissioner Banza.
Okay, hi, guys. Happy Monday. Um, so for District Six, we have our YAC meeting on the sixteenth, so it's coming up pretty soon. Kind of, and then I'm still trying to get into my email so I can access more applications, because I think I have some, but I haven't been able to get into that, so I have to figure that out. Um, and then for the communication side of the commission, we still have to post introductions. They're coming. Slowly but surely, I'm gonna post them, I think, this week, probably like tomorrow, because I have them all done. Um, and then piggybacking off of that, just a reminder that if you guys have anything you want me to post, just send it to me, and I got you. Um, and then we're gonna also outreach for the uh the survey on Insta too, and then we're gonna have flyers, so if you guys need any flyers, print it out, so you can put them out in schools or your neighborhood. Just let us know, but in general, just normal things. Let me know if you have anything you want me to post, and yeah, District Six YAC is going strong. Thank you.
District Seven Commissioner Vu.
Uh, hello. So for my YAC update, we've had four YAC meetings so far, with the most recent taking place at West Evergreen Park. Um, there, we created forty-seven hygiene kits for a local nursing home. Um, so, yeah, and we've also closed applications on the city web or on the Youth Commission website. And we ended up with around thirty-five-ish YAC members. Um, we're creating Instagram posts to highlight what we've done so far and introduce YAC members. Um, we hosted a bonding last Saturday or last Sunday when we had the meeting, and we actually got matcha, so that was pretty cool. Um. I'm also promoting the survey now, and we're looking to partner with the four on an environmental conference that we're gonna talk about more, and we're currently filling out the event request form. So that's it for me.
District Eight Commissioner Munyas.
I don't really got that many updates, but so far I've been getting a bunch of applications, so I've been trying to get through it. It's just it's hard to organize it, because it's like a bunch, and I don't really know exactly what to say to each one of them, so I already asked back, and she's gonna help me out, create um a doc uh to copy and paste into it. And then last October eleventh, we had our Y C C meeting for our uh revision policy for inclusion, housing, and ordinance. Uh, that went well. We talked a lot about having uh and basically just including housing for to see if we can include a housing for homelessness and seeing what we could do about it. Hmm, that's pretty much it.
District Nine Commissioner Singh.
Uh, yeah, so not much happened uh this month, but one important thing is uh we are putting together a presentation that we are going to present at Lee High School, particularly in the Environment Club, because uh, sitting on the environmental ad hoc, I think it's really important to get all hands on deck for any future projects that we might come up with, such as the native oak plant or taking inspiration from the native oak planting last year. I think that we're aiming to do something similar this year, so I think it's better having the most help we can. So, yeah, it's pretty much it.
On my end, I've had bi-weekly YAC meetings, and so right now my YAC is focused on resources for under uh represented youth, environment, and civic engagement, and so the civic engagement portion is working on contacting professors for a um webinar discussing the impacts of state propositions and the election. The Environment Committee has been organizing our monthly cleanup at Almanin Lake Park, which is scheduled for November sixteenth. And we are working on formulating a drive to collect books from schools and to potentially build community libraries in neighborhoods that do not have access to books right now. Other than that, our YAC has also been partnering with neighborhood associations, such as the Almanin Valley Community Association, and we hosted a forum for a debate between the school board representatives in my district. That concludes my report. Citywide Commissioner Kucheruski.
Alright, so what I have been doing lately is I have been setting up my YAC. We have over twenty-three members, and our first meeting will be this Sunday from two to three thirty at the M L K Library. Um, on the agenda, we have a bunch of things. Um, we're basically going to plan out our basic schedule and outline and how we want to operate in the future. I plan on creating subcommittees with long-term initiatives and short-term initiatives under two general focuses. And on that is gonna be a lot more after the meeting, I can say. But for now, I wanna keep it pretty open-ended so that I can have here what my YAC members would like to focus on, although I will kind of be orienting it towards the commission's desires and their initiatives.
Thank you. We will now move on to item seven, items for future commission meeting agendas. Do any commissioners want to add a agenda item for the future meetings?
Um, possibly a discussion about the environmental conference that Possibly a discussion about the environmental conference that, sorry, Genesis and I.
Did you restate that, what you said?
Oh, so D four and I are planning to host an environmental conference. And we'd like to have that on the agenda for discussion for funding.
Got it. Thank you. Any other commissioners? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, meeting schedule and agenda items. Our next commission meeting will be next month on Monday, November twenty-fifth at six thirty PM in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Commissioner Gonzalez, any motions to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Second. Please vote on your screen. Okay, the commission has voted unanimously to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty PM.